Ready to go?
Ready to go.
All right. Good evening. It is 6:30, and we have four of the five board members here representing a quorum. We do not have with us, and I'm not exactly sure why, Alan, but I think Kevin Carr, Mr. Carr is not with us tonight. I think he's out of town. So it is 6:30, and we'll call to get all to order the MUD Board meeting. Citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The board is not permitted to take action on or discuss any comments made to the board at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The board will hear comments on specific agenda items prior to the board addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or the time limit determined by the president or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form. That includes the topics of your statement. Citizens' comments should be limited to matters over which the board has authority. Lori, do we have any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry, whoops.
Whoa.
Whoa. Before we start, I think we're a little loud on the mics here, but before we get to reports and updates, I was talking with the board, the panel up here. I don't know if everybody saw it, but we lost a member of, a former member of the MUD, and that would be Bill Armstrong. I did not know Bill, but some of you up here on the dais did, and I think Lori, I see some of the staff nodding. So certainly, our thoughts and prayers go out to the family, the Armstrong family. I guess he passed away on the 13th. So Tony, you may have, as prior to your time, but anyway. Okay. Reports and updates. One, staff reports. A, capital improvement projects. B, water operations report. C, wastewater systems and reports. And D, finance reports.
Good evening, directors. I have a few little updates for you tonight. The waterline interconnect project, I'm not sure if you all noticed it or not, but we, over here in the vacant property, the contractor was able to go ahead and get about half of their pipe from their supplier, so they asked if they could go ahead and get that delivered out here, even though we don't have a contract in place yet. We had no issues with that. The documents have been sent and submitted to TCUQ for approval, so they will release our bond funds. That way, we don't have to dip into any cash reserves prior to the contract. Due to, I'm told, COVID-related reasons, the contractor won't be able to get the majority of their parts and supplies in here until October, so I doubt that we will issue a notice to proceed or a start date until sometime in October. That's just a guess. Lift station one, we've got some good information on that I received today. The easement access, the original parcel or property owner that we had tried to work with before, they sold the property. I did get clarification today that the new residents or new customers there are open to working with the district, so in the next few weeks, hopefully, we can get something solidified on that. As part of the risk and resiliency assessment, I'm not sure if you all remembered, what the majority of the information feedback from that would help the district get a higher score. The majority of that was our emergency response plan, which we are currently in the process of and will have completed by the end of December. The other thing that stuck out to me is what's called a business continuity plan. So I reached back out to Half &amp; Associates and trying to determine what exactly that involved and what it might cost to go ahead and get that implemented as part of the emergency response plan. It looks like it's about $10,000 to $15,000 additional costs for them to populate that for us. So we've got a couple of our projects that we're looking like we're going to be underfunded on as far as the engineering side, so I'm hopeful that as part of this process, we can utilize those funds and work on building that business continuity plan along with the ERP. The CMMS, do y'all remember the CMMS? Computerized Maintenance Management Software. We are still trying to get that implemented. It has been a slow go, but some of that's been on our part. We did get information that we should have that implemented and ready to go for field staff to start using by the end of August. We're currently having some issues with OpenGov slash STW and the correlation process between the work orders and how that'll interrelate to each customer account, if you will, but we may have to just continue on and worry about that at a later timeframe.
So do we, do we talk about when we're going to be kind of doing dual systems for a while, for a period?
There is a potential for that. We're still going to try to get it to operate as intended. Worst-case scenario, staff has to initiate a workover over here on the screen compared to the screen. Does that make sense? Right now, right now, the way it is, they create a work order, staff goes out and do it, anything in the field that they need to. That information would have to be backpopulated into the STW side on the customer account. The CMMS program will intercorrelate and do it all at the same time, but if we can't get those two pieces of the puzzle to talk, it'll just be an extra small step. Also, I've got some other good news today. Thanks to Lori and working with the contractor, we're very, very close to the website being done and completed.
Two weeks.
Actually, it's actually going to be less than that. And the reason I say that, we could have turned it live today if we wanted to, but there's some other small things that I found today, she's found today, content, fine tuning. But the other thing that came up is we're fixing to have billing next week, so we're going to wait until the billing cycle goes through, and we're looking for mid to maybe late next week that we roll that out and get it ready to go live. So I'm very proud of it, proud of Lori. She's done an excellent job on working through that process and working with that contractor. It's been a ton of work, so other than that.
That's one of my notes I can check off without even asking.
It is? Well, I knew that you were going to ask, sir.
Yes, I did. Mr. Rose?
I didn't feed him the question pre-briefing, so.
Ah.
Do we have any, any early indications back on the results off the smoke testing?
Not yet. I'm still waiting for the final report. Our project manager, she's been out, she was out last week, so she may have received it, and it just hasn't gone through yet on her emails. It usually takes, it can take a month, month and a half, depending on how much work they have compiled.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff? Okay. Move on, consent agenda. All matters on the consent agenda list, all matters listed as consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Directors and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Two, consider an act to approve consent agenda. A, July 2021 combined financials. B, July 27, 2021 joint meeting minutes. C, July 27, 2021 regular meeting minutes. And D, approve interlocal cooperation agreement with Benton County for property tax assessment and collection effective October 1, 2021 with automatic renewals through tax year 2023. Someone like to entertain a motion?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
I'll second it.
No?
Accept or approve?
Oh, as approved.
Approved. Thank you.
We have a motion from Vice President Chapman, seconded by Secretary-Treasurer Casten Gay to approve the consent agenda as, as proposed. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Regular session, item three, receive master plan update from Half Associates.
Directors, Preston Dillard is here tonight with Half &amp; Associates. He's been the key individual with Half working on this project for us. He did send over the draft reports to us late last week. We're still working on going through those to try to identify any comments that we may have, but we wanted to go ahead and get this information into y'all. That way, you could see, see how it could potentially impact the rates and then how those rates could impact the budget if you all decided to move in any sort of aggressive decision.
Thanks, Alan, and good evening, directors. Preston Dillard with Half Associates. As Alan mentioned, I'm here to provide just a brief update for you on the two master plans. Got a PowerPoint to lead us through that, and then if there's any further information or drill down questions you have, I'd be happy to try to answer those at the end, or feel free to pop those in as we go through. So as you probably recall, we're doing two master plans for the district currently simultaneously, basically, one for the water distribution system and one for the wastewater collection system. So starting with the water system first, just highlighting the CIP recommendations that we're making. First off, as kind of echoing the AWI study that we were doing, we do have a couple of recommendations in the resiliency category. One is to pursue an emergency connection with South Lake that will provide an additional supply in emergency-type situations. And then to, if those negotiations aren't successful, potentially look at additional groundwater supply also from an emergency-type situation.
So what, are you, maybe you're going to get to it, I apologize, but what does that entail? I mean.
There'd be a short run of pipe on the, I guess, the eastern side of the district connecting to the South Lake system. There'd be a valve in place that both the district and South Lake would have access and control of, and so it'd be normally off, but in an emergency-type situation with approval of South Lake, the valve could be opened and a certain amount of flow could come to Trophy Club from South Lake.
Yeah.
I also thought when we saw this the last meeting, we had a concern, doesn't South Lake get their water from Fort Worth just like we do?
Yes, sir. They are also a wholesale customer of the city of Fort Worth. However, their supply makes it through a different route, a different pipeline route. They actually go through the Keller system and then north from there, so they, they're actually off of a different set of pipelines than the Trophy Club supply is.
So, so we still have the same source, but we have a different routing mechanism for the water?
Correct. It's still coming ultimately from Fort Worth, and if you work your way back up through the Fort Worth system, it gets back to the same water plant, but from the Keller pump station and tank there, close to Keller, it'd be two different routes. So it does provide some amount of redundancy in connection that.
So if someone cuts our main route, there's hopefully.
Correct.
Okay. Reverse routing. I'm aware of that.
Yes. If someone takes out Fort Worth, you're both out of trouble, or you're both in trouble, I should say, but. All right, then the second category of recommendations in the CIP would be in what we're calling asset management. And on the water side, you do have some older pipes that are kind of problematic from a material standpoint, AC being the asbestos cement type pipe that was extremely popular back in the 70s, but since then, we've learned that that wasn't a great material for piping. And then ductile iron pipe, which is great for a while, but once it gets old, it becomes very brittle and becomes a maintenance hazard, is very susceptible to movement and hot and cold temperature swings. So there's approximately about 111,000 linear feet of that material in the district between those two pipe materials, and so I think as part of the rate study, we've looked at some replacement plans of a 10, 20, and 30-year length.
What percentage of the 111 is that of the total?
I don't recall that off the top of my head. It's not a huge percentage.
Just ballpark, 10%? Anybody know, 25%?
I think it was less than 20.
That's what I was going to say, too.
Maybe 18, somewhere around there.
And then in the third category, looking at your booster pump station, which is right across the street here, that's the water from Fort Worth, and your groundwater wells comes into those two ground storage tanks, and then the pump station there pressurizes that, you know, fills your two elevated tanks. So depending on the exact nature of your growth in the future, you know, as you know, the district or the town of Trophy Club is mostly built out. There's only a limited amount of space that's available to be developed in the future, but depending on exactly what happens there, you know, that may adjust somewhat in terms of what your capacity may be or your demand for those areas. So that might trigger an additional capacity need there. And then I should point out, you know, getting back to an asset management standpoint, those pumps are fairly old, and so they may, they'll need to be replaced due to age at some point in the future, but we do think that's going to be beyond five years. And then considering some other things in the report, we did look at some O&amp;M or non-CIP type recommendations as part of our study. So just to go through those quickly, I think it could benefit operations to have some additional remote pressure monitoring in the system, so I think that's something that could be handled in an O&amp;M-type budget. It would provide information to the SCADA system that pressures at certain key points in the distribution system. Secondly, to, you know, discuss with staff and have them kind of consider further potential operational strategy strictly for high demand, and that might help stave off the need for future elevated storage. That was the reason that we've kind of looked at that. Third, it became evident as we were working on this study that it's a bit difficult to get information out of your current SCADA system, and so to help both operations as well as future studies like this one, it'd be good to consider an upgrade of the SCADA system, or at least the component to allow a more enhanced way to export data from that And I need to talk to Mike about this further. We did notice in the, in the data set we got on water usage that one of the major users in the, in the town or the district was the wastewater treatment plant. I think that may have corresponded to the time that the service water pump station may have been down or out of service at times, but if that's a more longer-term situation, I think we should look at ways to reduce that potable water uses there at the plant by using service water, effluent water. And as mentioned on the previous slide, two of your pumps there at the booster pump station apparently date back to 1982, so obviously, there's only a limited service life that those pumps have. You know, these things wear out sooner or later, so we kind of want to put a watch on those to see, maybe closely more, more closely monitor their performance and maintenance activities and via the head of the curve there in terms of replacing them before we have some sort of catastrophic situation.
Before you leave that slide, could you make me smarter on implement a high-demand operational strategy?
So this, this would deal with peak demands, you know, usually during the summertime. There's a limited amount of elevated storage, and of course, that gets taxed during those high demands times. So there are some TCUQ rules about how much elevated storage you should have based on your size and your demand, and Trophy Club is kind of at the border of that right now. So.
Considering both tanks?
Yes, sir. And so to kind of stave off that potential capital expense, obviously, that's when you need that demand, or excuse me, that storage the most during those demand periods. So it may mean tweaking the operational strategy of the booster pumps. They're usually tied to on and off based on the level in those elevated tanks, so we might look at a different operating band specifically for these high-demand periods.
And in reading the draft reports, the majority of it's SCADA operating.
Okay.
It's, it's pump operation. So for example, in the draft report, it talks about during high-peak demands, the, the water within the Bobcat storage tank by the high school, it'll sit there stagnant because the water can't fill and it can't draw out enough and cycle fast enough because even if it's full, if you're sitting there pumping water through the system, it's not drawing out of the tank.
Yes.
So that, that's one of the issues that he's talking about.
Okay.
But currently, based off of those two small straight-line pumps that he's talking about, the way that the lead lag and third call for a pump, the way that the structure is set up in SCADA, it's not the most efficient way to operate the system.
Okay.
They're actually inhibiting the, the maximum strength of the system by being in a second-call type phase, the way I understood it.
Okay.
I didn't butcher that too bad, did I?
Sounded good.
Okay.
Creating a conflict internally in the system.
Somewhat.
Okay.
Just not the most efficient way.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly. All right, then to talk about the wastewater side a little bit. So same approach, we've got some CIP recommendations there. At the top of the list is lift station number one. As Alan already updated you, there's progress there on the access road to that. Obviously, that would be a great help to be able to have a pathway to, you know, officially drive maintenance vehicles, et cetera, directly to the lift station. And then we're working with district staff to come up with a task order to work on rehab of the lift station number one, so I think that would be a forthcoming project as well. And then similar to the water side, we do have some asset management-related projects on the wastewater side. Same storyline, the bugaboo for pipe materials on wastewater system is a vertified clay pipe, VCP. Again, they must have been a great salesman for that back in the 70s, but particularly in our North Texas soils that are subject to a lot of movement, clay pipe is very brittle, does not move well, and so it's known area-wide as kind of a maintenance headache. So again, that's, that's something good to work at replacing over a time period there. We have a lot less of that to deal with, only about 15,000 linear feet in the system, so I think even a much smaller percentage than the 20% we were talking about on the water side. And then same token, on the wastewater side, we did come up with some recommendations we felt were prudent to consider in an O&amp;M situation or non-CIP. So part of our scope of work, we did some drawdown testing on your lift stations, or I should say, nine of your 10 lift stations, the nine largest, and we did notice through that testing that four of them were fairly significantly below their off-the-shelf, out of the factory capacity. This is completely normal for particularly wastewater. Pumping raw wastewater is, is a difficult duty for pumps, so there is a lot of deterioration over time, and normally, these can be held, hindered, or excuse me, remedied by pretty inexpensive operations like replacing parts of the pumps, the parts that are subject to wear, like the impellers. So the four listed there showed the greatest reduction in capacity, three, two, six, and one, in order from worst to not as worst. Second there, obviously, there's been a lot of work over the last few years in your GIS system, which has been great, but particularly as you're expanding your CMMS, which is going to be tied to GIS, particularly on the wastewater side, there's some, some gaps there in data, particularly on material and depth information, so we recommend that that effort continue to build information of the GIS. We also recommend that the district do a follow-on project to the master plan where you do a more formal risk analysis of the sewer system that would be part of a more robust asset management project. As discussed already, the district's moving forward with a smoke testing plan, which falls under the category of condition assessment. Certainly recommend that you keep that going. I guess a little over a year ago, we helped the district prepare a SOI plan, sanitary sewer overflow initiative plan, which is a kindler and gentler plan from the TCUQ as opposed to giving out lots of enforcement actions and penalties. They're trying to get people to voluntarily commit to certain measures, and so that's a 10-year program that the district went forward with last year, and obviously, want to continue doing that, some of which is covered in like, things like smoke testing. And similar to the water side, we did take a look at where the growth could occur in those remaining developable areas of the town, and in particular, that growth could impact the drainage areas associated with lift stations three, five, and nine. So as, as growth may happen over time, staff should continue to monitor that situation, look at the flows coming into these lift stations, and at some point, that may trigger a more capital-type project to increase the capacity in those three lift stations. And then last but not least, this would be out on the radar somewhere, but, you know, we did look at a number of lift stations that we could possibly eliminate by doing some gravity projects to get rid of them, and lift station three was one that kind of moneyed out in that regard, if you will. So we, we want to make sure that stays on the radar screen as something that the district may want to move forward with in the future, again, probably past the five-year window. So that's my relatively brief update for you. Any other questions I could try to answer for you?
So I'm not sure, Preston, if this is a question for you or probably staff, where do we go next? Obviously, a lot of recommendations.
Some of these recommendations are either already in place or budgeted to be replaced, repaired, maintained, or they're going to be a future project that we look at in future budgets.
Do we have, or Preston, do you have associated costs with most or all of these things we just talked about, you just talked about?
We do, in the draft report, I think there's a few we still need to fill in, but for those CIP ones, yes, we'll have costs for all those.
Once we get the master report, we'll send it out to you to look at and take a, take a review. Now, as far as asset management, which it being the bulk of the recommendations, the rate study includes some options that you can see tonight and determine whether or not you want to make it a priority or not. Again, what he provided was that currently, right now, we're on roughly, on the water side, you're on a 40-year scale, 40 to 44-year, just depending on costs. We came up with three different options, a 30-year, 20-year, and a 10-year option. That way, you could see, as aggressive as you wanted to be, what that cost would be to each customer per month.
Any other questions? Preston, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item four, consider to take appropriate action regarding the water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2022. A, receive report from rate committee, and B, consider to take appropriate action regarding rate assumptions and projections for fiscal year 2022 budget.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board.
Chris Segret.
Chris Segret with NewGen Strategies and Solutions. Pleasure to be with you again this evening as we wait for the presentation to queue up here. I do want to extend a thank you to Mr. Rose, Mr. Chapman, your rate committee that worked with us through the rate study this year. We held two different meetings that ultimately result in the presentation that you're going to see this evening. We have baked in the latest and greatest, and I believe, final budget numbers at this point, pending further action this evening, as Mr. Rose over there will, will potentially have some words on. As we look at the longer-term forecast in terms of water and wastewater, this first slide tonight shows you what we're projecting for water performance going forward. Do want to point out that at this time and going forward, we are projecting that your current water rates are insufficient. Longer term, as we look out, a couple drivers I want to point you to. One is the water purchases from Fort Worth. Those will continue to increase annually as you go forward, so we have increased those annually as we go forward. The other are the cash capital expenses longer term. Again, you do have needs on your water system, and we're going to talk more about the asset, asset management plan here in just a moment.
So Chris, I'm sorry, you talked about increases. You're not talking volume, you're talking cost.
Correct. Cost, cost increases. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is the water side. On the wastewater side, and we've talked about this a little bit previously, wastewater right now is in good shape. Revenues are slightly above expenses on the wastewater side right now. However, this is predicated on an assumption that we are going to get back to a pre-COVID flow level. When I was with you in March, we were talking about the winter average, the winter average changing. We were in a different place at that time. We were coming out of COVID. Things seemed to be getting better. Now, who knows? Who knows where we're at? But that, that assumption is included in this projection that we will get back to those pre-COVID levels. And so that's why you see, again, the call-out on this slide. As I said before, water insufficient at this time, wastewater looks to be in good shape, predicated on that assumption, getting back to pre-COVID-19 flow levels. You can see for 2022, the budget as it exists right now is balanced against these revenue projections. As we look at '23 through '25, still in good shape, primarily driven by wastewater. As we look at 2026, at that point, we anticipate the entire utility being insufficient in terms of overall revenue again at that time. But again, a couple things want to visit with you more in-depth about tonight. Let's start with wastewater. Want to talk about residential and commercial and the balance of revenue between residential and commercial on wastewater. As we go back, pre- As we go back, pre-COVID, we were at this 72/28 percentage. This is the percentage of revenue recovery between residential and commercial. As we looked at it this last March, residential had bumped up, commercial had gone down, we'd shifted that, I think it was about two or three percentage points, more towards residential away from commercial. Again, with the assumption that we're going to get back to pre-COVID levels, the board decided at that time, let's just wait, let's sit on it, let's see what happens. And so as we have pushed the budget numbers through, we've looked at the projected revenues, again, pre-COVID, what that is leading us to is a potential imbalance between residential and commercial. This is slightly different than what the rate committee had, had talked about just a few weeks ago. This has changed a little bit with the budget numbers as we, as we've pushed both the revenues and the expenses through the allocation methodology. So again, at this time, residential slightly over recovering, commercial slightly under recovering. But again, that is based on the 72% residential, the pre-COVID assumption. So do want to make note of that as we go forward. Depending on board action tonight, you will again look at wastewater rates in March of next year as we go through and reset the winter average. So again, we do look at wastewater rates twice a year, once with budget, once after the winter average is reset. So we always come back and try and make sure that we're monitoring this, making sure we're not getting too far out of balance.
Chris, in a perfect world, should both residential and commercials be basically in each category a push? I mean, revenues equal expenses? You want a little?
In an absolutely perfect world, potentially. But again, there is not a perfect world. This is based on assumptions, and then there are times when board policy may determine that we want to go a different direction. Getting both to exactly equal, excuse me, exactly equals zero, that means there is no subsidy in the system. There, there's no subsidy based on this cost allocation, based on these assumptions. However, as you get into rate policy, there are a billion different ways to design rates, and there may be different motivating factors as to why you would want to move away from cost of service. But again, ideal world, yes, we would want it to equal zero. So going back to the prior presentation on the master plan, want to talk about the asset management plan. The numbers that we were provided, you can see at the top of the screen, between the water system resiliency, the water system asset management plan, large dollars here. But again, what we did, we took these numbers, we went and, and tried to look at a 10, 20, and 30-year plan, how would we fund this? And this is just to give you an idea of magnitude. We're not suggesting these rates that you see on the screen. This is really just kind of giving you a magnitude, what is it you'd be looking at in terms of customer impacts as you go towards starting to implement these plans. So again, just looking cost per thousand gallons, if we were just going to put it in the volumetric rate and fund it over 10 years, that's about $4.39 escalating to almost $5 by 2026. Yes, sir.
Chris, are these changes to the current rates, or are these additional to the current?
This would be additive. This would be on top of the current rates. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So again, the cost per thou, oh, yes, yes, sir.
And is this to accumulate sufficient monies to fund the projected costs, or is this if debt service bonds were issued, this is not?
This would be all cash funding. This is all cash funding, accumulating monies over time, spending those monies as needed over time. So there is no debt funding baked into this. So absolutely, you could go and issue $37 million of debt if you wanted. That would change these numbers slightly because now you're adding in financing costs. This does not have financing costs built in. So again, you do see the impact of these numbers on a 10-year, 20-year, 30-year basis, 30 years funding this over 30 years cash, $1.46 per thousand. You, you do hit a peak just based on, on timing there of $1.78 per connection per month, if you were going to fund it through the fixed charge of the rate. Again, you would add on a 10-year basis, $43 to $48, looking 30 years, somewhere between 14, possibly up to $17. And again, that is additive on top of your current rate. That's what we're looking at there on the water side. That's, that's the big chunk on the water side. Wastewater side, the wastewater asset management plan, about $5.4 million, lower amount there. So again, cost per thousand, you could see $1.25 up to $1.40 on the 30-year, 42 cents going up to 47. If you were just doing it in the fixed charge over the 10-year, $9, $10 on a 30-year, about $3 to $4 is what you'd be looking at. But again, that is additive onto the rate. And the reason I wanted to talk about these slides this evening, again, just to give you an, an idea of magnitude of impact, but as we go into the rate discussion tonight, we potentially have an opportunity to not adjust wastewater rates. And I'm going to talk about that more here in just a second, but it's potential, we could hold the line on wastewater rates, potentially generate a few extra dollars, assuming our assumptions hold true, that we go back to pre-COVID levels. So we'll keep that in mind as we, as we start moving into the rates here. But any questions on the capital side on the asset management plan before I move on? Okay. Again, a couple of projected rate scenarios wanted to present to you tonight. Scenario one, I would refer to this as a break even scenario. What we would do under scenario one, we would increase water rates. You saw earlier, we had an insufficiency on the water side, we would adjust for that. The other thing we would do under scenario one is we would adjust sewer rates. What this would mean would be lowering residential sewer rates, raising sewer commercial rates, getting back to parity, getting back to zero that we were talking about earlier. Under scenario two, we would adjust the water rates, or really, the water rates are going to be the same between one and two. But under scenario two, we would maintain sewer rates at current levels. We wouldn't do anything to sewer right now. We would hold that constant, we would reevaluate those again in March after we get through the winter average. The reason for that, again, we are using pre-COVID assumptions, we don't know where things are going to end up. And while I'm showing you that under those sewer rates, we would generate extra dollars, I can't guarantee that. That's based on an assumption, that may not actually happen. So again, we would hold the line there, we would look at that again in, in March of next year. So what do the water rates look like? What are we recommending there? You see on the left-hand side of the screen, the current rates, on the right-hand side, the projected rates. We are recommending increases in both the fixed and variable charges. So again, putting this increase across the entire rate structure. Do want to point out one other change we're recommending on the fixed charge. When you look at that fixed charge, it increases based on the size of the meter, which is absolutely 100% love that, need to keep doing that because that is based on the demand that that meter can place on the system. So a larger meter can place more demand on the system, that drives capital investment. So it follows that a larger meter should pay more. It's driving your cost, so we have cost causation there. But we have some slight changes we're recommending at those larger water meters, particularly as we look at the two-inch and above, we're recommending you increase those fixed charges a little more, getting back to that meter factor that you see on the right-hand side there. That meter factor is based on the instantaneous demand capacity of those meters. So what we're doing, we're trying to tie the charge base to, based back on the demand that that meter can place on the system. So this is based on AWWA standards. You can see the number of meters you have. You do not have a lot of meters at the three, four, six-inch levels. There are some there. But again, we are recommending increasing those fixed charges a little more, getting those fixed charges back in line with where they need to be based on those AWWA standards. Yes, sir.
Chris, one thing you brought out in our meeting is this particular change would set us in line with AWWA.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Quite, just a little bit short at the current time.
Exactly. We're just slightly short, this, this aligns back with those ratios, and that's why we go through a rate study every so often, is to realign and make sure that we are back on track with where we need to be. Again, you see the water rates there, we're going to talk about the customer impact on these water rates just momentarily. But as far as wastewater rates, again, we would propose, under scenario one, if we're getting everybody back to zero, residential would go down slightly, we would hold the minimum charge, we would keep that at 2215, we would adjust the volumetric charge, that would go down. However, on the commercial side, that has to go up. Again, commercial's only under recovering by about $11,000, $12,000, but you have very few commercial wastewater customers. There's, there's not the same level of volume there that is on the residential side. So because our denominator is small, again, rates, dollars divided by units, our units are smaller on the commercial side, so that makes a larger unit rate impact that you see going from $694 to $707. So this is just our check, as we go back and look at these rates, we prove out under scenario one, we're basically breaking even under scenario two, assuming pre-COVID levels, assuming things happen as anticipated, we would generate some extra dollars there under scenario two on the wastewater side. However, based on assumptions, we could also reevaluate this in March. If we did not, if we saw that we were generating excess revenue, didn't want to do that, we could adjust in March at that time. So customer impacts, what does this look like? For a residential customer, scenario one, again, coming in water blue, wastewater green here, slight reduction in the wastewater rate from 4440 to 4212. This is based on 5,000 gallons of use. On the water side, going up from $3795 to $3899, net change in the monthly bill, less than $1.25. So $1.24 monthly reduction in the bill under scenario one, and that's based on the net difference there, water going up, wastewater coming down. Scenario two, holding wastewater rates constant there, only going up on water, it's a little, little over a dollar a month, a $1.4 monthly increase there to a 5,000-gallon residential customer. On the commercial side, again, using 15,000 gallons of flow, 15,000 gallons of use is our comparison there. Scenario one, that would be an increase, increase in water and sewer, total bill increase of $4.47 a month. Scenario two, just going up on water, holding wastewater constant, $2.52 a month increase there on the commercial side. So again, fairly small changes coming out of the study. My recommendation would be scenario two, just hold the line on wastewater at this time, let's wait, let's reevaluate in March when we hopefully know more at that time and are not dealing with some new variant that might be out there. But again, fairly, fairly small changes that we're seeing in, in the rates at this time. Any questions I can answer for you this evening?
I guess a question of the subcommittee, are you in concurrence with Chris's recommendation, I would assume?
Yes.
Scenario two, that's the one I had starred on my own notes here, just given what you thought of it.
Basically, either scenario, they're going to see an increase on their bill, so.
Well, yeah.
So, you know, even though we save them money if we went with scenario one, just, you know, cup of coffee basically a month.
If you can get a cup of coffee for a dollar, let me know where.
Yeah, where are you getting the coffee?
When I walk to my kitchen, okay? But anyway, less than a cup of coffee, okay? The whole thing is perception, as we've talked about, you know, they're going to see an increase anyway. So if it turns out that we have a problem and we have to hit them even more again next year, they're going to say, why? So I, I think we should just go with scenario two.
Another thing as you look at rates, you need to be aware of, and it's something in some separate analysis I've been doing, tracking water consumption since clear back about 2006. Our water consumption per customer has been going down. I mean, we've increased our number of customers and the amount of water consumed has gone down. This is, this is good.
In aggregate, in total.
Yeah. And, and this, and this is, this is good because our customers are consuming. Unfortunately, it's like a person, a customer told me a long time ago, we decrease our usage and you have fixed costs that you still have to cover, so you have to increase our rates. It's an unfortunate fact that, that does occur. But I mean, the customers are to be congratulated on the decrease usage that they show.
Well, also, we've had some very wet seasons here too, so.
That, you're talking 15 years?
Yeah, well, yeah, but I mean, and I, I have the data on, on the computer that I've gone back and looked at it, and it's like the amount of decrease over that timeframe is significant. I mean, you drop, you drop from an average of 250,000 gallons for an average a year down to 181 or 179,000 gallons? You're talking about a significant decrease in the amount of use that our average customer's using.
They've actually been paying attention to us when we say.
Actually have, yeah.
Chris, I think you gave the impact on customers with 5,000 gallons.
Yes, sir.
Is that actually the average? That seems very low to me.
No, I think we're slightly above that at, at the moment, that would be subject to check, but I think we're just slightly below 5,000 gallons.
We're closer to 7,000. It fluctuates, but it's around 7,000.
Still lower than I would have thought.
Yeah, I was going to say 65, but.
That would be the winter averaging number for the winter, not, not, not when, not when we're out here irrigating our lawns.
Yes, yeah, during the summer, it's, it's certainly higher than that.
I could attest to that as a paying customer.
It was about 6.8, because I think it was originally seven when we started winter averaging, I think it was down around 6.8, down in that range, but it's, it's pretty low, pretty low.
I hear from my wife every time she opens that bill.
Any other questions for Chris? Spectacular job, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
It's great working with you.
So do we have a motion to adopt? Does somebody want to make a motion?
Let's see, do we need one? Okay.
Do you typically do it this month or when you adopt the final tax rate?
No. Well, this is, this is, this, what we're doing here is to decide which scenario, which rate we're going to go with. And so if we need a motion, I will move that we go with the scenario two as presented by the consultant.
Does that mean, conceptually, or amending your rate order?
No, concept, conceptually, conceptually.
The rate order will come back?
Yes. We, I mean, those numbers will all flow, but the, the basic concept is that we're going to go with scenario two in that, in the way that it's applied.
And I'll second it.
Second. So Director Rose moves that we take as presented, scenario number two, as presented by Chris. That was seconded by Vice President Chapman.
And I want to make sure that that's the approach of scenario two.
Approach of scenario two, thank you. Questions? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, item five, consider and take appropriate action regarding fiscal year 2022 budget matters. A, report from budget committee, and B, discussion regarding draft fiscal year 2022 budget. I think I'll start, Alan, with you, and then we have the committee as well.
Directors, last month, we brought the draft that we had in place prior to certified numbers being involved, and also as part of the fire department budget discussion last month. So tonight, Stephen has put together the final numbers with certified numbers we have, and with the recommendations that were provided by the budget committee, Mr. Flynn and Mr. Rose sat on, and we appreciate your assistance on that, so, Stephen?
A little special now. Good afternoon, good evening. All right, as Alan did say, that we do have the final draft budget here. You can enter the world of finance here, we got some nice colorful charts here to go over. So we did change up the summary here, so it makes it flow to last year versus this year, so we can see a comparison. So as we talked about in the last one, as far as a proposed tax rate, that's what we're bringing forward today, the overall tax rate. So the MNO tax rate is going to be, as we see here on the screen, the .07099, plus the INS tax rate of 0.03489 for a total tax rate, .10588, which is an overall decrease based on last year's tax rate. which is an overall decrease based on last year's tax rate. As we get down to the property summaries here, as we talked about in the last meeting, you know, we want to see a comparison as far as where we were last year to this year. As you see, we do have a 3.31% increase in property valuation from Denton County and Tarrant County and the Pid involved.
I know this is an unanswerable question probably, but Tarrant County going down, does that surprise anybody, or is am I the only one?
So this actually, we, there was a big change, I want to say about a month and a half ago. You know, when you have property evaluations go out, that means there's a bit, a bunch that went in review, and after the review, then it went down significantly at that time. So we, we did see a decrease in that. Any questions on the tax property? We'll go down to the summary here, and we'll go into more details on the next couple of slides here. But as we go down, we'll see that the general fund has a $0 surplus in deficit. Then we'll go over the fire fund, same thing, $0 deficit. And then we go down to the tax debt service fund and the revenue debt service fund, and everything coming down balanced. All right, what we have here is our tax rate assessment, and this is how the taxes are collected. This is just kind of goes in details as far as how we get the evaluation for, for the fire, for the MNO, then what the Pids allocation is, the surcharge for there, and then going down to what our INS tax rate is. I won't go in too far in details, if anybody has any questions.
Sorry to interrupt. Back to the decrease in the certified values. I noticed in the board packet, the notice shows an increase in the average appraised value.
Correct.
So to reconcile that is that, where is the loss coming? If it's not in the average appraised value, or is one county outweighing the other by that much?
Yes. So Tarrant County is the only one that's down, but if you can see Denton County is three times as mu, almost three times as much as Tarrant County is.
And that is offsetting?
Correct. So Denton County, or, sorry, Tarrant County did go down 2.25%, but Denton County overall went up 4.70.
And the average appraised went up.
Correct, for the home set, yeah. Yeah, what you see, what you see on the tax notice is going to be the average home set, and overall, there is a slight increase in there with the tax rate based on the valuation.
And that must all be because of Denton County?
Correct, and then there was a, I think there was a decrease in the exemptions from last year to this year, which changes from the counties.
Although the average is increasing, so.
The average value has increased, correct.
So I don't think the exemption dropped that much.
With the exemption going down, it means there are higher average, yeah.
Yeah, but just the sheer volume, I mean, the math shows you, right? That's how you get an overall increase, I would guess, if it's.
Do we have many more homes in Denton than Tarrant County?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tarrant County is going to be a small section at Trophy Club, and then on the other side of the highway, where's Alana? Any questions? All right, we'll go down to, and if anybody had any questions on the tax rate, I won't go into, log down too much in the details here. This is just how we do the calculation for the tax rate and how it then comes across. I do want to focus on the very bottom part of the tax rate. So once again, you have the tax comparison. On this left-hand side, you're going to have the tax requirement. So we are required to be at 3.5% without going into a tax deduction. So with the overall rate, we're looking at, we're right exactly where we need to be for the approval rate. What we have here is discussed in this last meeting, 57,700 is what is required for the contribution to keep us under the voter approved rate.
Which are related to what?
Which are fire.
Correct, so those are coming from the fund balance of the Fire Department to compensate for that.
And we can get into that here, once we bring up the fire final, I'll show you.
Yeah, because there's, there's other offsetting numbers, are there not, that I seem to have read somewhere? Okay.
Correct.
All right, we're going to go down to the general fund here. And we'll focus down on the main, main items here. As you can see, we have an overall decrease in revenue for 42,000 projected for next year. And this is being driven by water revenue.
And interest, right? I mean, that's happened, yeah.
That's correct. And it's pretty self-explanatory as far as the interest is post-pandemic. Interest rates have all bottomed out pretty much across the board, so we are seeing that. And then for water, we are projecting, as Mr. Rose talked about, we are projecting less consumption as we did in prior years.
Do these revenues, are they based on Chris's recommendation scenario?
These revenues are based on current, current rates. So now what we're going to do is, with the scenario two, that is actually going to bring in an additional 185,000, but that would be on top of what we have here. So when we bring this back here, now that we have scenario two, we'll bring it back with updated revenues that will reflect on there, but will show 185,000 surplus in the budget. As in scenario two. As we go down to, go down to water, we'll show an overall decrease of about 65,000 from overall expenses in the water side compared to last year. And we'll go down to the wastewater side. We're going to show 221,000 increase compared to last year in expenses. One of the big factors, the driving factors you're going to see here is the capital outlays. We have some larger projects here on the wastewater side for this year. And we can get to the capital page and kind of go over more detail on the capital side of it.
Quickly, as a point of clarification for the board, as you look across at salaries and wages, you'll see coal and merit increase based on regional CPI. We don't do merits. We do a step program based on, on duration, employment, annual increase up to 15 years. We don't, we do not do a quote-unquote merit-based system. I just want to be.
We have a 15-year step program built out for each.
Yeah, yeah. So that's a word I'd like to see stricken.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And do want to focus on there, one of the things, as, as Bill mentioned on this line on two, is this removal of one FTE for the wastewater side. And as we're getting down to the admin side, you'll see removal of two FTEs. As we see on the board of directors here, we're seeing just about 1,400, 1,500 difference from proposed to what we had last year. There'll be a decrease. As we go down, we'll go down to the admin side. We're seeing 192,000 decrease on the admin side. There's various reasons here, one being capital, another one being professional outside services, and then we have medical and employee salaries all going down. And that's due to the removal of two FTEs on the admin side. We have non-partemental, basically flat. The only main difference here is going to be our tax adding fees here, or appraisal fees here. So at the end of the day, we're looking at a zero deficit and surplus here based on current rates today. As I said, with the scenario two, it will generate about 185,000 more in revenue. Do I have any questions?
I ha, I do. It's not really a question. Without considering the additional funding coming in due to the, the water rate, to square water away. We have, due to the decrease in FTEs, the drop of three FTEs, and that ripple effect through the medical and those other personnel-associated costs, we've generated some significant savings here on the, on the personnel side. And one of the things I think I would like to do, that's not in this, as I understand it, is increase the medical for the employees. We've talked about this, talked about it last year, and when we got down, it occurs in December. And one of the things, one of the problems in that last December was we didn't know what the increase was going to be, what those additional costs were going to be, because we didn't know what the employees might do. Staff of, I understand staff has looked at that now and, and can give us those figures. I would like to, and this is without a commitment to do it in December, but I would like to see the funding carried in, in the medical line in these items to allow the potential for that increase, to do that at that point in December if we want to. I do not want to be in a position in December, if the issue, when the issue comes up, of saying, well, yeah, I'd love to do it, but we didn't put it in the budget. So I would like to put it in the budget, and when we get to December, if we don't use it, we don't use it.
Refresh my memory, because we looked at number, what ballpark? Somewhere around 35, 40 grand?
Looking at 36 and a half.
That's 35, 40 grand, yeah, that's good memory.
30, 30, they ran it out for me, 36,486. Split among all, all of the blocks, so it wouldn't be, I mean, it's not in one place.
Yeah.
But here again, in my mind, like I say, you know, I'd really appreciate the board's support in putting it in at this point. We get to December, and we can look and see whether, whether, whether the number works or it doesn't work, or whether we want to, want to go that way. But in my mind, I'd rather solve part of the equation here rather than get there and say, well, I'd love to do it, but we didn't fund it, so where do you want to steal it from?
Well, and based off of the recommendation for scenario two, we're going to show additional 185,000 roughly in revenue.
Yeah.
So with those additional revenues.
And I could down to 150.
Correct.
Yeah.
Potentially.
Which I would also, again, depending on the decision on that, the remaining funds, again, I like bringing a balanced budget. I would likely split those remaining funds up into capital improvement and add 75 roughly to each one of those funds as well.
Yeah. You know, if I can put general consensus on the board, that's the way I'd like to proceed with board support. Three head.
Steven, minor question, have you included monies to possibly acquire that easement Alan mentioned?
Yes, and we'll, we'll get to that here in just a second, we'll get to capital.
We actually, we actually have some funds from the wastewater treatment plant through attorney's fees that may, that may flow across, I mean, it's.
We have those allocated for the rehabilitation portion of it.
Okay.
In this capital that he's going to get to, it includes monies for the access specifically.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I just heard a dig or not.
Probably so, that's what I got.
No, I didn't, there was no dig, no.
Legal fees, so probably did.
No, no.
So for clarity from the board, then we'll add.
We decided not to make that lawsuit?
There you go.
Yeah.
So for clarity from the board, we'll add those additional monies in for the proposed additional medical expenses, and then we'll allocate the remainder to CIP as, as we so see fit.
Okay.
Okay, very good, thank you.
We'll bring this back next month, we'll have the new rates and everything projected on there too. We'll see everything from.
You want to go over to CIP real quick?
Yes, I will. Any questions, anything else on the general fund?
No. I, I want to say that I've, everybody knows I'm a nitpicker on budget. I want to say that I'm really impressed with this document. Really impressed. There's a lot of work here, thank you for doing it.
All right, we're going to move to the Fire Department as the next one here. This would be a refresher, everyone's seen this for the last meeting. But one of the things I did want to point out here is what we have here in prior year reserves is 57,700. This is a contribution, so it's going to be coming out of the fund balance in order to keep us under the voter approved rate. So this shows as an offsetting revenue.
Yeah.
Which basically means it reduces it out of the calculation of taxes and the assessment. And everything else will be the same, it's still going to be 1.877 budget for the fire, which is blended between the mud and the town.
Yep.
But I would like to go ahead and add, with that 57.7 that we're pulling from cash reserves, we're showing that the surplus for the end of this fiscal year is roughly 42.8, so there's an offset of about 14,900 that really are hard cash monies to be coming out of the, the fund balance of the fire.
So, yeah, bottom minus 15 grand roughly.
And it's all estimated, it's, that's all estimated at this point.
That's correct.
So. But the concept remains the same, we're going to, we're going to pull some money out of, out of.
But this does reflect the budget that you all approved, the total dollar amount, so.
Correct.
If you want to go over capital real fast, then we can highlight some of those items.
Well, we'll move past, this is just debt payments, and if anybody wants to go over it, we can, I just want to go and look at capital. All right, so here in capital, as we can see, we'll start with the water side here. So we did a five-year projection on what capital we have that we know was in for, in front of us, outside of what's in the master plan, as far as what Chris and half kind of went over. So we're looking at here for this year is 870,000 for the capital for this coming budget for the water side.
And these numbers are all without adding any additional revenues in per the discussion, Chris, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
These are as of today's budget with today's rates. So as Alan talked about, we need to move roughly about 150, split evenly between water and wastewater.
Okay.
We'll bring this back. I'm going down, we're going to have wastewater here. This is, here's a, a little station one upgrades, this is going to be part of the easement here for 300,000, as we were talking about. And all in all, we're looking at 665,000 for the wastewater capital. And we get down to the admin side, we're looking at about 120,000 for the admin side. A big portion of that, as, as President Flynn was talking about, we are looking at ERP system. So this is far as funding for that, and to look at forward what the district's going to do.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions on the end of the capital, any more detail?
No.
Actually, going to fix the driveway out here?
It's, it's been working on it, it's just, it's part of it. All right.
Dumped my coffee and got a couple holes, Phil.
We can leave it, we can leave it like it is if you prefer.
All right, as everybody knows, I love graphs and charts. Me and Bill have a little bit in common here, so we like to go back at some historical data. So what I want to try to do is just do a snapshot, this is water consumptions on this first chart. Just trying to do a snapshot on what we're looking at, and this is in the thousands as far as over a trend over the last 10, 11 years, how we're trending for, for water consumption. As you can see, there's a pretty steady decrease that's going to go up and down the scatter plot, but for the most part, there is a decline over the years.
And so population is increasing.
Correct. And speaking of that, so we'll go down here, we'll just actually move down to total connections. You can see as connections start to increase, we're starting to flatten out. Connections are pretty much going to be level and flat with no growth going forward. And then we're going to roll into the revenue, as we can see on the revenue here on this top right-hand chart. Basically, what we're trying to do is, the blue dots are where the axials are, and this last dot is where I'm projecting revenues are going to fall. And then the trend line, we're trying to watch where we see the trend. Sometimes we're going to be a little bit above, a little bit under, just depending on what we think the average is going to be for the following year.
Is total connections, is that population?
Yeah, so, oh, total connections, that's our connections in the system.
If, if, we have, okay.
40,000 meters?
Yeah.
Per year.
If you look at, look at it this way, you have 5,000 connections per month.
Times 12, there's 15.
Per year?
Yeah, per year.
Yeah, it's.
This is done off a yearly, if I can put year on, this is done off a yearly total.
I would have said 5,000, but, okay, I got you.
It's.
You had 5,000 last year approximately?
It's, it's been flat for three years roughly, right?
Right. And we got 48, 50 right now, roughly connections per month.
The, the consumption per connection per year, I think you owe me a zero.
I, I owe you a month on here is what I owe you.
A month?
Alan and I talked about this, I missed the month part, so this is per month on here.
Monthly consumption.
Monthly consumption per connection by year.
Monthly consumption.
I need to work on my titles.
We'll work on that total connection title too.
That's, I used, what did I, do you remember, when I say use 189,000?
Like you said, it was 180 something, 186?
180, 190. So I looked at this chart and went, well, obviously, you just owe me a zero. Because I probably use a little bit more water than the average person with the 5,000 square foot that I water. So I thought, you know, here again, I thought you just owed me a zero.
Actually, I do.
Zero in that column, 20, yeah. Like it would be rather than 24,000, be 240,000 gallons.
Right.
So, anyway.
We'll reevaluate those two graphs.
Start up. I'll, I'll work on my headings and get them.
Fix the first one for Tony, will you?
You can borrow, if you want to make charts on it, I, I sent some stuff to the general manager over the weekend, if you want to make charts out of that, go ahead.
I mean, I got a lot of data, we, we compare some data.
Yeah.
Um, the last section here, we have IT and how everything's broken down for the IT and what software we have and hardware. And that is our budget presentation. Anybody have any questions?
The only question I had is, uh, could you send me a copy of, uh, C, uh, GF dash C?
Yep. I changed my stuff, but, yeah.
Because I think, if I remember right, you're going to use, plan on using less water yet, next year than we did this year?
Correct.
Uh, the interesting thing is, uh, some of this data I've been chasing, we have decreased water consumption every year in, in a trend line, every year for the last six years, over the ten-year average. This guy has been going down. And I've been patiently waiting for several years on the mud to have a dry year so we could be, have a big revenue, because everybody's out watering the grass. It's not happening, it's just not happening. And I appreciate Stephen being, uh, I want to say restrictive in the amount of his projections, but conservative, this is the word I'm looking for.
Oh, conservative, yeah.
Conservative's the term, I appreciate that because, uh, it would be nice to have an overage, you know, like on a real wet year, but it's better not to have a shortage, so I appreciate your approach.
You have a question about the budget? Okay, so there's no, um, motion to be had, right? That we were just reviewing the budgets for now?
Correct.
Correct. All right, item six, consider and take appropriate action regarding tax rates for twenty-twenty-one tax year. A, approve proposed tax rate for twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one tax year, and B, schedule date and authorize publication of notice for hearing regarding adoption of final tax rates for twenty-twenty-one tax year.
Does this motion require special verbiage?
No, not for the district.
Okay, because I know some later I have. When we do it for actual, I know that we, I have particular verbiage to use, but, okay. This is for posting purposes, and when we post it, correct, we cannot go above this rate. Once we, once we post this rate, we cannot go above it, so we're locked, we're locking ourselves into that, okay? And do we only need the one tax rate?
Yes, this, this is total.
Okay, this, okay. I move to approve the proposed tax rate for publication for twenty, is this twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-two tax year? Twenty-twenty-one tax year of point one zero five eight eight per hundred dollars of evaluation. Or evaluation.
With the tax hearing to be held? With the tax hearing to be held on what date?
Okay, with the, let's see, with the, with the tax hearing to be ho- held on Monday, September the twentieth, twentieth, twenty-twenty-one.
You could authorize publication of notice.
And authorize the publication of notice. See, there is special verbiage.
That yours, then?
Do we have a second to that motion, and I will try to read it. You want me to read it before somebody seconds it?
No.
Okay.
I'll second, okay.
Let me try to recap what Mr. Rose said. Motion to approve, seconded by Secretary of Treasury Castengay, to approve the twenty-twenty-one tax year tax rate of point one zero five eight eight per hundred dollars evaluation, did I get that right?
Publication.
Public, well, I'm getting to publication.
Oh, and sorry, I'm going to sound like Bill, proposed, make sure you say proposed.
Okay, approve proposed tax rate for twenty-twenty-one tax year of proposed point one zero five eight eight per one hundred dollars evaluation. One. Two, schedule, uh, or secondly, schedule a tax hearing to be held on Monday, September twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, and also a publication notice as well, on that same date?
Authorized.
To authorize, authorize publication notice. Did I get that somewhat close? Okay, we have, we have a.
Next year, the staff will provide that all in writing.
We'll put that language in there next time, we apologize.
I can read it to you if you'd like.
So we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, Bill, for putting that together, I think.
Yeah, no.
Um, okay, item seven, consider and act to ratify and approve fire department budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two pursuant to July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one special meeting. Oh, sorry, Bill.
I move to ratify the, uh, fire department budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two as, uh, considered and adopted July twenty-seventh, uh, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Director Rose moves, seconded by Secretary of Treasury Castengay to, uh, ratify and approve fire department budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two as presented and approved, uh, as presented July twenty-seventh at the, uh, twen- twenty, July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one special meeting. Discussion, all those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you.
You got the money.
Um, item eight, discussion and possible action regarding Gatsby reserves and fire department ladder truck lease. Alan, I think this is yours.
Correct. If you will all look, we provided a document here for you all to review. Uh, this was brought up during last month's meeting with, I believe, the intent to determine whether or not the board wanted to take action to go ahead and make the final lease payment now, or wait as part of the budget as it was approved. So, real quickly, if you don't mind, let's, let's go through this document real quick. The first line you've got, at the end of July, uh, the fund balance was eight thirty-five, four twenty-six. We're projecting the fiscal year expenses to be one thirty-six, six seventy-one, sixteen, which leaves a balance of six ninety-eight, seven fifty-four, eighty-four. And that's what we essentially will be starting out the new budget with, starting October one. Uh, the ladder truck expense that we currently have remaining is one twenty-seven, one forty-nine. If we leave the target operating expenses of thirty percent in, uh, like we've discussed in the past with our fire I L A, that's roughly five hundred and sixty-thousand, sixty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty cents, which would be a total of six hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, seven fifty-four, eighty-four. So if you were to take the existing balance right now, pay for the ladder truck final lease payment, and leave the thirty percent in there, you're looking at a delta or an additional extra funding of eight thousand, three hundred dollars roughly. Now, one of the things to consider is this lease payment is already proposed and figured as part of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget. And we typically make this payment in October. So if you go ahead and approve the expenditure of these funds now, you're only buying a month and a half roughly. Another thing to keep in mind is the Gatsby reserves. Currently, we have four hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars in there, and we have another eighty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty budgeted for a total of five hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. I'm not really sure what, if any, action you all want to take tonight on this, but this is the information we had prepared.
So it's just, it's just a timing thing, right? I mean, we're talking about either hitting this fiscal year budget now, or relatively soon, versus it already going to be in effect in October.
That's correct.
Is there any difference?
No, sir.
Monetarily to our?
No, sir.
I don't see any reason to changing things if there's no
No.
no benefit in it.
What's the, is there any advantage, and I'm not seeing Alan staff somebody about doing this now as opposed to what we've always done or, or planned for?
None, none.
That's why I just asked.
Yeah, yeah, I was looking at Stephen.
None that I'm aware of actually would make things more difficult for us, because we are so far into this budget process, and the budget has been approved with these expenditures in it, and I would recommend leaving it as is, and in the fire budget.
Good with me.
I, I would agree.
No action required.
No action required, thank you. Um, okay, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one dash, or point oh-seven-one of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board will may consult with its attorney and executive session on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the disciplinary rules of professional contact, conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Open Meetings Act, or to seek advice of counsel on legal matters involving pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offers. A, consult with legal counsel regarding the existing inter-local cooperation agreement for administration of fire protection services between the district and the town of Trophy Club, and seek legal advice regarding the potential renewal, termination, modification, or replacement thereof. Item ten, deliberations pursuant to section five-five-one, point oh-seven-four, A, one, the Texas Open Meetings Act regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public office, office or employee, general manager, annual review. It is eight fifty-one, we are in executive session. Nope, seven fifty-one, thank you, good catch, seven fifty-one, thank you, Kelly. Okay. It is eight thirty-six, and we are returning to regular session. Uh, item eleven, consider and take appropriate action regarding executive section. I believe, uh, we have one motion, Mr. Rose.
I move to, uh, approve the amended and restated inter-local cooperation agreement for administration of fire protection services, uh, between Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One and the town of Trophy Club.
Okay, um, you heard the motion from Director Rose, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Chapman, is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. It is unanimous. That was the only item coming out of executive session. Items for future agendas.
Next month will be your budget and tax rates.
Tax rates and budgets for next week. We'll also have a similar executive session notation on, um, other item that we didn't discuss, so we can put that in there. Any other items that you can think for future agenda? Okay. Uh, next meeting is Monday, September twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, at six thirty P M. It is eight thirty-eight, or adjourned?